Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Wednesday, April 18th meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. So we do have some very special guests here with us on this evening, and I ask Dr. Bracy will come forward and bring them to us at this time.
Thank you Chair Patillo, and good evening to everyone. Yes, tonight we're fortunate to have members of the Churchland Academy Elementary School Safety Patrol with us, and they're going to talk to us more about their amazing program. And to start us off tonight, though, we have two special members of the patrol who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and share our school statement. The first was supposed to be Robbie Ward, but he was unable to be with us, so Ms. Jacobowski was pull a rabbit out of the hat, and now we have Michaela Jacobowski, who will be leading the pledge for us. So, Michaela, if you will come forward and then providing the school statement. Nyla Thompson, Nyla is a fifth grader at Churchland Academy, and her favorite subject is math. Nyla wants to be a pediatrician when she grows up. Now, with the parents of Nyla and Robbie's, well, Robbie's not here, well, and I think I knew who the parent of Jacobowski is. So Ms. Jacobowski, you want to stand and come as well as they come forward to present us the pledge and statement? Yes, okay. All right, and the parents of Nyla, if you want to come up to the front so you can get a better picture, feel free to do so. Will you all please stand again? Yeah. Now, I know we have members of the Safety Patrol here, so I'm going to invite all the parents, if you want to just sort of wrap around here, if you want to get a good picture, feel free to do so. Come right here, come right here, you won't be in anyone's way. It's all about the kids. All right, we're ready when you are.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The good republic stands one nation under God and the visible, will live to you and justice for all. Please have a seat.
Hi, my name is Bria Hill, and I was the first Safety Patrol to sign up. I love being a Safety Patrol because I get to make sure the kids go home happy and safe. The thing I love most on Safety Patrol is the kids. They always brighten up my day. I always have a smile on my face when I'm serving.
My name is Nyla Thompson, I'm in Safety Patrol. Safety Patrol helps us to be responsible and respectful, it helps us to follow the rules. Safety Patrol helps us to have high expectations and good grades. We must bring our equipment to serve, we help students get to their classes safely, we also help them get to their buses or cars safely. We stay on duty until all the car riders and bus are gone. We assist the building to make sure students are safe.
Hi, my name is Lincoln Gill, Captain of Safety Patrol. Safety Patrol is about keeping kids safe, no matter the size, no matter the grade. We are here to help them, help them. We make sure the students get to the right class, the right car, and on the right bus. Not only do we do that, but we make sure they feel safe at school. To be on Safety Patrol, we look for someone who is responsible and someone who follows the rules.
Good evening Board members, I'm Ms. Jacobowski, the principal, proud principal of Churchland Academy. I just want to say that thank you for giving us the opportunity, when Ms. Devon, our security guard, brought this program to us with the Sheriff's Office, I was excited because we have a great group of student leaders who have really worked hard. They're also members, which they didn't mention, of Anchored for Life, which we started this year, which is sponsored by the US Navy, and they work to help our new students, or students moving, or students facing deployments, or parents who may not be present for long periods of time, and they held special support groups for those students. So they've really worked hard, and I'm very proud. We also have a special surprise tonight for a special member of our Safety Patrol team who has really been above and beyond of her role as a SRO. So we'd like to recognize Ms. Officer Deputy Sheriff, excuse me, Shepherd. I also really quickly want to thank my lovely security guard who works so hard and tirelessly for these children each and every day. She goes above and beyond the role of, I'm going to get me teared eyed, the role that is expected of her, and I'm so grateful for her. And all of the babies that we have, they've done a great job, so thank you everyone for supporting us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobowski, we missed you at the principal's meeting this morning, but it was an excused absence, it was. But you know, we did recognize you today. You received the Bridge Build Award, and the reason for Churchland Academy was number one in the country for mindfulness for the Inner Explore Program, and she beat out approximately 4,500 schools for that award.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And we truly appreciate the board's support on that program. Coach Baker, you all have been very supportive of us as we started mindfulness, and we have seen a decrease in our suspension rate, so we're very excited about that program, what it's offered for our schools, so I appreciate that, Dr. Bracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jacobowski, we do have gifts for the students that are going to be sent over to the school, and if you would let me know, a good day, we'll have a pizza party for the Safety Patrol.
Okay, awesome, thank you, they're ready for pizza anytime.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you Chair, I just have a quick question. Are they aware, I think they would be good candidates for the Portsmouth Police POW Program, it's a summer camp, and that would be a good segue for them, so if you like, I can send over the information to yourself from Ms. Devon, but being that there are Safety Patrols, like I said, that would be a great segue summer camp for them, and it's through the Portsmouth Police Department.
Absolutely, we have about 20 students that are on our Safety Patrol, this is a small group that's with us tonight because of the distance to be downtown, so I'm sure they would love that opportunity.
Yeah, and they probably will welcome them all.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all as well, and thank you for the flexibility, because you know, you all were supposed to come last month, but with the weather, we had to push it back, so appreciate it.
Dr. Cotton.
Yes, thank you, I wanted to say congratulations to you on being a Safety Patrol, because I know you have to have your grades in order. I had the distinct opportunity of serving as a Safety Patrol as people walk through the halls, and I want to say it's a heavy responsibility, congratulations, and thank you for serving as a Safety Patrol person. Yes, I was at Douglas Park. You all don't hear her talking in my ear, yes, I was at Douglas Park.
Yeah, I need to see a picture of that. Ms. Thomas.
I'll make this quick, thank you Chair, just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Jacobowski, for coming, and the Safety Patrol, Bria, Nyla, and Lincoln, the captain, you all did excellent speaking, I always want to recognize the students for public speaking, it's not easy, so awesome job to you all, and awesome job to the whole group in what you do in the schools, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, Agenda Item 3.5 is our School Board Mission Statement, Ms. Thomas.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 3.6, Attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, here. Ms. Boone.
Here.
Madam Cotton.
Here.
Mrs. Schumay.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Dr. Patillo.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you so much, and we do have amendment to the agenda.
Thank you Chair, I would like to make a motion to move Agenda Items 5.1 and 5.2 to the consent agenda.
We do have a motion, we have a second. Second by Ms. Boone, motion by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much, I would now ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, April 18th, 2024.
Move for approval.
Motion made by, was that Ms. Schumay?
Mm-hmm.
And second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We do have Agenda Item 4.1, Student Representative Report, she is actually absent on this evening, so we'll move along to Agenda Item 5, Agenda Item 5.3, and 5.4, Ms. Nolasco.
Hello.
I'm sorry, Dr. Nolasco.
I knew to whom you were referring, okay.
I want to put some respect on your name, so.
Whereas, teaching is an honorable profession, one which all Americans know well because of their personal experiences, and whereas, the National Education Association and the National Parent Teacher Association spearheaded the annual observance of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which commenced in 1984, and whereas, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through the 10th, 2024, recognizes an educator's significance to our nation's future and to our students' future well-being, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board convey its profound appreciation and the heartfelt gratitude of the Portsmouth citizenry to those individuals involved in the teaching-learning process for their diligence, for their zeal, and for their care of our great historic Seaport City's young people, and be it further resolved that the School Board salute the school division's teacher corps as a manifestation of respect and support for the magnificent role they play in the educational process, and that the School Board designate May 6th through the 10th, 2024, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it finally resolved that this resolution of commendation be made part of the School Board's official minutes, and that copies be sent to all administrative units and schools.
Thanks so much, I entertain a motion for approval at this time.
Move for approval.
Second. Yep, the motion was made by Ms. Boone, and I believe second by Ms. Schumay. Do we have any discussion for a Teacher Appreciation Week? Seeing none, roll call. We do one first, 5.3 first.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much, 5.4.
Whereas, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Virginia Board of Education recognize the month of April as month of the military child, and whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia is a member of the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which addresses key issues encountered by military students including enrollment, placement, attendance, eligibility, and graduation, and whereas, military-connected children and their families can move, on average, every two to three years within the United States or overseas, disrupting academic routines and friendships, and whereas, military-connected children provide unique and valuable insights on learning, friendship, service to others, and heightened national or global awareness, and whereas, through its 23 schools and centers, Portsmouth Public Schools has 5% of its student population that is military-connected, and as such, works closely with liaison officers from the local military installations to provide supports for students' unique needs, and now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Portsmouth recognize April 2024 as month of the military child, and encourage all schools and offices to continue to show appreciation with activities to honor our students from military families, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the School Board's official minutes, and that copies be sent to all administrative units and schools.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 8.1 is our monthly report from Curriculum Instruction, Dr. DeVries.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy, you have this month's highlights in your School Board packet, we have two presentations for you this evening, one from March that we were not able to present, and then, of course, one from this month. So our first one is related to social studies, I'd like to introduce our new Coordinator of Social Studies, Ms. Chris Trock, and she will do that presentation. And then she will be followed by April Taylor Martin, who will do her presentation on our wonderful art happenings around the city.
Good evening, School Board Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the Board, and Dr. Bracy. Again, my name is Chris Trock, and I am the K-12 Social Studies Coordinator. I could not be more pleased to be joining the Portsmouth Public Schools community. I bring 29 years of experience in education, and I have many passions when it comes to social studies education. Among them are developing the skills of history and social science, fostering inquiry, and engaging students in critical thinking. However, my deepest commitment involves the idea that social studies teachers are literacy teachers. In this sense, reading, writing, listening, and speaking are integral in the social studies curriculum. We understand that there are challenges facing our students in social studies, we have seen some fluctuations in performance on the standards of learning assessments, so it is our goal to continuously seek to provide, I'm sorry, seek to improve ways of providing opportunities and learning experiences that promote geography, history, and service education, while also developing students' literacy skills and making meaningful connections to the world in which we live. Program specialists in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction organize many of these opportunities in collaboration with teachers and the organizations with whom we partner. One such partnership was with the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation Outreach Program. Students in each fourth grade class across the division have already, or will be in the near future, engaged with the Jamestown Cultures in Contact, Virginia 1600 to 1620 Traveling Trunk. During this hands-on experience, an outreach educator leads an exploration of recreated artifacts and primary sources. It is my pleasure to share this video where history came alive recently for students at Churchland Academy.
When we talk about cultures converging or coming together, often what happens is ideas are exchanged, so no culture stays the same once they meet another culture.
I'm here representing the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, and we have a traveling trunk that is recreated artifacts from the Jamestown Settlement, so we represent three cultures.
The clothing, I will connect that to English, the spears in the Boeotan arrow, I will connect that to the Powhatans, and then the shells that they wore, I will connect that to the Africans.
Having the challenge of not really knowing, but then actually seeing those things actually helps put a, you know, artifact to whichever culture it was.
The fun part was when we had to look at the pictures and identify them as what culture that was in.
To be able to connect not only the reading, but connect the reading back to the actual physical, I think that, you know, brings the lesson more to life, getting that different variety of learning.
The little cloth thing, the branch cloth, and this amazed me because like, a cloth explains the cultures and where people belong to, like some rich people would wear those cloths.
So what I think the kids learned today that they didn't know was these Africans that were brought over actually had skills with them before they were brought over, they just, it wasn't just like they knew nothing. Also, the different things that the Native Americans had, and what the arrow was made of, and how they were, you know, resourceful when it came to making the certain things that they made.
To be able to bring this to the students and give them hands-on opportunities and a way to apply the history standards and practices that they're learning in class is really beneficial and really brings it to life for the students.
I had fun today because we had a hands-on activity, and I got to wear an English soldier's helmet.
As you can see, students not only get to see, touch, try on some of these items, but they were also able to investigate, read and ask questions, and make connections to what they learned. Once the experience is complete, students also participate in follow-up activities to solidify those understandings. These learning experiences are not just happening in elementary classrooms, the pictures here are of Virginia and US history students at Churchland High School examining artifacts and document recreations from the Spanish-American War Traveling Trunk, which is provided by the MacArthur Memorial Outreach Program. In the picture on the left, students in a proximity class at Waters Middle are involved in a debate about child labor, and in the picture on the right, AP-US history students at Manor High School are hosting their own historical dinner party during their lunch block. The students took on the role of individuals from the early 20th century and devised and asked challenging questions about the legacy of each. All of these activities provide students the chance to build background knowledge, and they are then able to access content to read, write, listen, and speak about it with more So I addressed where we are with just a few of the engaging experiences occurring in schools, and I wish now to shift gears to talk about where we are growing. Standards of learning for history and social sciences are scheduled to be fully implemented in the school year 2025-2026. We will begin and continue to revise local curriculum to meet the SOL as well as provide support for teachers. The Virginia Department of Education has recently provided crosswalk documents, and we will be scheduling with lead teachers as well as content and grade-level planning meetings before the end of this school year to share those. And beginning this summer, in optional sessions and throughout the next school year, during planning sessions, we will be meeting to review the new standards and the updates made in our local curriculum. By next summer, all teachers will be provided with and trained on the finalized local curriculum, along with additional information and materials so that they feel confident to teach the new standards. As we know, reading and responding in social studies content requires us to examine historical events and geographic influences, as well as develop civic awareness, just to mention a few. It is the goal of the Office of Social Studies to provide support in the skills necessary for literacy development, understanding and interacting with the world around us, especially as it relates to history, civics, and government, and geography, and the capacity to question thoughtfully and think critically. We will have a laser focus on these areas as we provide ongoing professional development throughout the summer and the school year, as I mentioned before. As I conclude, I want to reinforce that the Office of Social Studies is committed to building the capacity of educators with not only content knowledge, but also establishing a mindset that as social studies educators, we are also literacy educators. As a newcomer to this division, I am already impressed with the educators that I have met, both in the classroom and in leadership positions across Portsmouth. I have seen such excellent examples of people doing what is right for children, and have already come to feel right at home here. Thank you for your time this evening and everything you do to support the Portsmouth community. Any questions you have for me?
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from Board members?
All right.
Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you so much, and welcome to PPS. So in developing the curriculum, because I see that there is going to be new curriculum, how does critical race theory play a role in developing that curriculum?
The idea of critical race theory isn't necessarily a K-12 topic, so it's not, you know, it's not something that we build into curriculum because critical race theory is a theoretical, you know, concept that really is for high school, or I mean, for, you know, college-level students.
Thank you.
If you want to do that. With that said, we are always building in opportunities for culturally responsive practices within our classrooms, so cultural responsiveness is something, especially in the social studies classroom, that you probably already see in any social studies classroom you walk into, and you will continue to see as we call out those opportunities within our curriculum. As you're probably well aware, there's been some challenges around the curriculum when it went back into revision several different times, to finally come to a place where it was finalized, and there are still some challenges with that. With that said, as a Portsmouth, you know, educational team, we are committed to ensuring that all of our kids see themselves in their learning experiences, to make sure that they're not only learning the standards, but also about themselves and how they fit into their communities, so. We'll continue with that, the idea of critical race theory, like Ms. Trock said, in and of itself is more of a, I think, you know, it's a hot topic, it's a hot button, it's a word that has become very controversial, but its foundation is in the higher ed community, and so we really, it's not something we in the K-12 setting really need to address at this point, or care to address because it doesn't really fit into our work, but certainly culturally responsive practices do.
Thank you.
And I just want to be clear also, just for those that may be watching, we're actually about to implement a new social studies curriculum that is approved by VDOE, and CRT, Critical Race Theory, is not embedded in that curriculum at all. Just wanted to be clear with that. Dr. Whitaker?
I mean, I understand that critical race theory is not something that we teach, but I think how we approach, or the lens through which we present the information is important. but I think how we approach or the lens through which we present the information is important. So I noticed that, and I think it was on the first slide, there, there was a title, "First Americans," and I think that was referring to indigenous persons. So is that something that comes down from the Virginia Department of Education, or is that something from our, I mean?
It is. It's the, the, the standards themselves from 2015 called the indigenous populations "first Americans." So we still use it, you know, begrudgingly a bit because they weren't the first Americans.
Right.
And, and it's, you know, it's something that we're combating, and we include the words indigenous along with whatever the video tells us to do, but we also, we pair it and we, we explain the, the word indigenous, it's part of what we know and what is truth about, about history.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Good evening. I hope you don't mind, I brought my entourage. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, School Board Chair Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, distinguished school board members, leadership team, principals, teachers, and community guests. It's my great honor to serve as the Senior Supervisor for Visual Arts here at PPS. In the past three years, we have made great strides towards two very important goals. My first goal was to grow student engagement through participation in visual arts across the district. And when I first came on board, there was no district-wide initiative for art exhibitions. So I began one, and in 2022-23 school year, we displayed over 500 student works in the community, and for the 2023-24 school year, we will have exceeded that number, and over 600 works will be displayed in the public. So I have expanded our community partnerships with local, regional, and state-level exhibition opportunities for our students and for our teachers. Here are just a few examples. Partnerships that we have in the community and places that we have been exhibiting student work and teacher work. First, we partnered with the Book Club on High Street, a local, local coffee shop and business where we hung student work and teacher work. We have a standing series at the Portsmouth Public Library in both the Churchlin and the downtown branches, and this year we added to that with a partnership with the Children's I just hung our display at the ODU Tri-City Center, which is right outside the Portsmouth Conference Room for our middle and our high school students, and I just asked Dr. DeVries to hand you an invitation to that reception, which will be on May 16th. Some other shows that we have ongoing, the month of March to celebrate youth in Youth Arts Month, we have a show at the Norfolk International Airport. And this year I had the distinct opportunity to show our students' work with the Virginia Department of Education in the James Monroe Building. Some of our students' work are hanging there now. And also, I got an opportunity through the generous contributions of Ms. Atkinson to have student work hanging in the State Capitol Building and Speaker Don Scott's conference room in Richmond, which was a wonderful opportunity. So that was my first goal, was to build this exhibition series, and the second goal has sort of grown out of the first. And these are some images from art exhibitions and students receiving awards across the district. The second goal really grew out of the first goal, and that was to offer participation in visual arts and cultural experiences across the district. So during COVID, the number of field trips, of course, to art museums and things like that had pretty much ended for some time. So for the first time in a long time in this school year, we will have offered an art museum visit with tours and meaningful art activities for stu-, for all schools across the district, K through 12. We've also offered guest artist lectures for students and professional development with hands-on activities and exhibition, exhibition opportunities for our teachers. Some of the art museum and community partnerships that have provided grants and other collaborative opportunities have been what has made this possible. And these are just a few examples. The Elizabeth River Project provided some art teacher professional development opportunities. The Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art, the VA Moka, has offered funding and a grant to get all of our elementary students to visit their museum and have hands-on activities. The Children's Museum currently has some of our elementary works on display. And also, side note, there's a reception for those K through six on April 26th. Come on out if you're interested. We also had some of our art teacher professional development at the Children's Museum, which was a wonderful experience. The City of Portsmouth has funded a series called "Art is Revolutionary," and we had the rare opportunity of having an artist and author and children's book writer, Nicholas Smith, who also worked for Disney for a while, just a side note, to come out and give some guest lectures to our students and teachers. And I'm working on a future partnership with Disney Plus. I don't have all the details on that yet. Having an opportunity for our teachers and students to engage further with some producers and get some real-world knowledge of what it takes to have a career in the arts from personal experiences and having those conversations. So that was, that was a really wonderful experience, and we're going to do more of that. So thanks to the City of Portsmouth for sponsoring that series as well. Of course, we have a longstanding relationship with the Chrysler Museum of Art, who have housed and given opportunity for all of our middle schools and all of our high schools both semesters to come out and have tours. We also have a partnership with the Arts for Learning, which is a grant, and that is called IDEAL, and that program is housed at Douglas Park, an after-school program series, and the culmination event will be held at the Chrysler Museum of Art, where the children who participate will get to have their works displayed, and they will have a big event for them, and it's going to be wonderful. We've also had activities with Norfolk State University. We've had students tour, and I've had my teachers do professional development trainings there. And also, at Oldhamman University, we have done student tours of the facilities and hope to do some teacher training there in the future as well. So those are all of the partnerships and things that are going on, and I'm sure there's more to come in the future. I would be remiss if we went through this evening and I didn't recognize the hard-working and dedicated art teachers, who were also talented artists and creative professionals. For the past few years, our teachers have displayed their artworks in the community. This October in 2023, they were invited to have their work displayed at the Chrysler Museum of Art, a world-class museum. Congratulations. In partnership with the Norfolk Public School Teachers as well. So these 27 art educators continue to raise the bar for our students, art engagement, and promote creative excellence on a daily basis. I have some of my teachers here this evening. Like I said, I don't travel without my entourage. I would like them to be recognized.
Can you introduce yourselves real quick?
Hi, I'm Megan Webb, and I teach at West Haven Elementary.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nafana Sukho, and I teach at Hodges Manor Elementary.
Angel Jones, I teach at Churchlin Academy.
And I'm, these teachers are my backbone. Nothing that I have brought forward would have been possible without the work that they do every day, inspiring these kids and helping them wake up in the morning and want to come to school. And I'm so proud to be part of that team. So I'd also like to thank all the parents within the community who continue to support our students in their creative endeavors and who have come out to our art exhibitions and awards ceremonies in great numbers to celebrate art in our schools. We had over 50 parents and students at both of the elementary receptions this year, and I hope to have at least that many at the middle and high school reception. So come on out, you're all invited. One more page. So this is some photographs from those different events. We've got a pottery workshop at ODU, we've got the Chrysler Museum workshop, some docent tours there. You can recognize the Chihuli sculpture there that's hanging at the Virginia Moka. And Angel Jones right there with her students on the school bus. I think I've lost my page in my script. Let's just say, in the past few years, we've made great strides towards these goals. We've grown student engagement through our district-wide initiative to display student artworks in jury shows and celebrate award winners K through 12. We've also offered important cultural arts experiences through museum visits and guest artists and workshops for all of our schools. However, the best way to show you what the programs are, what kind of impact they're having, is through the voices of our students themselves. So please enjoy this short video presentation. It's an honor to serve you as the Senior Supervisor for Visual Arts. Thank you.
I've never done artwork like this, and I really like my artwork in the library for all Portsmouth.
We were coming on my, my, my sale month for my picture. I came in first place.
I drew a little bit of places. I, I did a donut shop, a church, and I did a hospital. I did a couple of cars because all the cityscapes have cars in it, and I really love my artwork.
My project is coloring and drawing stuff and cutting it.
It's a happy bear in his sweater.
My artwork in the library is cool. It's nice to put my art here.
It's my first time showing my artwork. It makes me feel happy.
Thank you. You guys have any questions for me or anything?
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions from board members? But thanks so much for all that you do, and y'all have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item 9.1 is a monthly report, Superintendent Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board. Let me open with a reminder to all of our families with preschool-aged children, the time to register for our preschool program is here. That's right, preschool registration is open, and you can begin the application process now. There are a number of eligibility requirements for our preschool program, as well as the necessary paperwork families will need to have for the application. The deadline to submit these applications is Thursday, May 30th. We have staff who are happy to go through the eligibility criteria and the process for registering. For more information, visit the preschool registration page on ppsk12.us. Speaking of next year, we're already working on hiring staff. Are you looking for a job in education or maybe considering a mid-career change? That sound like a commercial, don't it? Yeah, yeah. Come join us at the PPS Job Fair Thursday, April 25th, from 3:00 to 5:30 at IC Norcom High School. Make sure you bring with you your professional or teaching license, as well as your transcripts. We will have staff available to meet with you right away and see how you can start your PPS journey with us. To learn more or to start an application, visit ppsk12.us/jobs. Also coming up soon is our annual Community Resource Fair, hosted by the Portsmouth Special Education Advisory Committee, CIAT. This event is a great time for students and families to come and have fun, as well as learn more about the vast community sponsors, the vast community supports in place for them. This year's Community Resource Fair will take place at the J.E. Parker Recreation Center and will be held this Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Attendees can look forward to some giveaways, great food, special prizes, and again, information regarding community resources. Finally, I want to remind our families that registration is open for our Starbase Summer Camps. They're always a highlight of our summertime, and this year is looking to be another exciting season. There are five sessions for the camps of this year's offerings, which range from fan favorites, including the PPS Coders, Eco Cadets, and new options like Maritime Mania. Camps are free and lunches provided each day. You can learn more now at ppsk12.us. Thank you, Chairman Patillo, for my time. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any board member comments? Ms. Schumate?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to make this very quick. Earlier, we were speaking about the history books changing. Now, I in no way speak for no other individual on this deus, but I want to make this clear to the parents and the guardians out there. We do not write the books. We are responsible for teaching what's in the books. With that being said, critical race theory was brought up, and it was brought up because the books are changing. I want to make sure that the parents understand that it is your responsibility as well to teach your babies the proper history lesson, because it's changing, and it's not up to us, unfortunately, but it is up to those, and you should probably already know if you pay attention to politics. Our governor would like to have that changed, and he was successful in that. So I want to encourage all of the parents and guardians, if you are not satisfied with how the books are reading, make sure that you take the time to teach your children. Get them some books. Go to Barnes and Noble, wherever you seek to educate your child. Make sure that they understand that the history that is being written right now is not the history that we know. Thank you so much.
Any other board member comments? Seeing none, thank you all for coming. Meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night.